Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the June 25 meeting of the Salina City Commission to order. Would our clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Angel. Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
At this point in time, I would like to invite all those that can join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand and then follow up by a moment of silence. This is the time of the meeting where we have a citizens' forum for all those that would like to address the commission for any item that is not on today's agenda. So if we have any citizens present that would like to come forward and express their views or opinion on anything, again, not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and your address. Seeing none, today we have no awards and proclamations, and that'll move us into public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4348, requesting vacation of 36 feet and 8.19 feet of the planed restricted access on Magnolia Road along the north side of Lot 1, Block 1, in the Premier Edition. Sub-Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 12, 10,646.
Mr. Hobbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, today we have a public hearing scheduled to report on a petition that's been filed by Premier Properties for a break-in access on West Magnolia Road. The access is a restricted access area, and this is a public hearing in which we'd ask for you to open up and conduct that public hearing. And then, at the meantime, we have city staff who is not able to be here today, as well as we have planning staff who are out trying to work on getting firework stands open today. They're not able to attend the meeting. We've also been asked by the owner themselves to postpone the meeting until, or actually continue the public hearing until next Monday, where we can finalize the report and get the information to you. We've had some information that was brought to us over the weekend that we'd like to continue to re-study and continue this public hearing till next week. So, we would ask that you would go ahead and open the public hearing, ask for any community input that there would be here, and then continue the public hearing until next Monday.
Okay. This time, I'll open the public hearing on this matter and bring it to the citizens for any citizen input that we have at this point in time. And then, we'd bring it back to the commission, looking for a motion that would extend the public hearing until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I move we extend the public hearing on Petition Number 4348 until next Monday.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing on Petition Number 4348 until our next scheduled meeting on, can you give me a date for that? July the...
Second.
Second?
Second.
July the 2nd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Matter concluded, we'll continue the public hearing on July 2nd. We move ahead to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of June 18, 2012. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 126912, authorizing agreement with travelers for the renewal of the City of Salinas Comprehensive Property Casualty Insurance. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of 12 traffic signal backup systems from Gady Sales in the amount of $42,000. Item 6.4, Resolution Number 126913, appointing a member to represent the City of Salina on the Salina Area Technical College Board of Trustees.
Are there any items that a commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move we approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve the consent agenda is read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 4-0. We have no development business in front of us today. We'll move on to administration.
Item 8.1, Second Reading Ordinance Number 12, 10,641, vacating the south 6 feet of the north 48 feet of Lot 3, Block 5, at the Country Oaks Estates Edition.
This ordinance number 12-10641 was passed on first reading June 18th, and since that time, there have been no comments received. The right-of-way vacation request has been reduced to, from 14 feet to 6 feet, leaving 42 feet of right-of-way. Is there any public comment on this issue? Any comment from commission? Bring it back for action.
I move we approve ordinance number 12, 10641 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 12-10641. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. Motion carries 4-0.
Item 8.2, Second Reading Ordinance Number 12, 10,645, vacating the right-of-way for Park Street, west of Chicago Street, in the Elmdale Edition.
And, this item was brought to us and passed on first reading on June 18th. Since that time, there have been no comments received. The ordinance has been modified, substituting street for alley, and requiring that the vacated area be retained as public utility and drainage easement. Is there any public comment on this issue at this point in time? Not to bring it back to the commission?
I move we approve to adopt on second reading, ordinance number 12-10645, vacating the right-of-way for Park Street, west of Chicago Street, in the Elmdale Edition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 12-10645. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. Motion carries 4-0.
Item 8.3, Follow-up Report to the City Commission on Building Contractor Qualified Individuals and Master Skilled Tradesmen Designation after referring the matter back to the Building Advisory Board.
Mr. DeVors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. February 13th of this year, the City Commission approved a text amendment submitted by Salina Area Technical College to allow their instructors to maintain their licenses, being a qualified individual, for the school and for their licenses. On the first reading of that, which was February 6th, we were instructed to take that back to the Building Advisory Board because of similar circumstances that applied to other contractors and tradesmen. The City Commission instructed staff to refer this issue back to the Building Advisory Board for their consideration. And the topic is, is that the municipal code currently prohibits a person from being a designated QI or master, which is a qualified individual or master tradesperson, for more than one contractor license. And a qualified person cannot be independently licensed outside of their employer to work, to do moonlighting or other types of work outside of their company. And whether or not that's acceptable to their employer, it was mandated that they could not do that. Similarly, qualified persons in that, if, for instance, an electrical contractor had a qualified individual who was a master, but they also had other masters in their employee, those other masters who were not designated could go out and do that, as long as their employer allowed that. So, that was kind of the topic. We went back to the Building Advisory Board, and we posed the question to them in four different manners, four different questions. And those are all Item 1 through 4 on the blue sheet. And, all four times, the Building Advisory Board elected to leave the ordinance as it was, that said that you could not be a licensed contractor for, I mean, I'm sorry, a qualified individual or master tradesperson for more than one contractor, unless you were, unless you worked for a, or through the technical college or other trade colleges. So, like I say, we went to the Building Advisory Board, and they elected to leave the ordinance as it was. So, we met on it, staff met on it, talked about it. We had four different questions that came up, whether or not we wished to continue to require the designation of a qualified individual or master tradesperson. And we do want to continue that, because it ensures the involvement of a qualified responsible party for each building permit that we issue. And we asked ourselves, do we want to limit the number of licenses on which a person can be identified as the QI or master tradesperson? And, in past practice, we have always, it's always been expected that the designated master or qualified individual be available by at least a phone call, or, you know, can be called into the site if there is a problem or condition. At least we have a qualified individual running the job, if you will. Not that they're there 20, you know, 24/7, but they are kind of in charge of the job. The third question was, we wanted to know if we wanted to make a distinction between a contractor for hire as opposed to non-contracting employers. If you go back in the blue sheet, Scenario 1 and Scenario 2 kind of describes the difference between a commercial contractor and a non-contracting employer. A non-contracting employer would be a large organization which has a contractor's license for their, for their business or their property only. And that qualified individual is their qualified individual for the contractor, for that contractor license to do, and they do not go out into the community and try to, try to get work as construction projects. So that's the distinction between the commercial contractor and a non-contracting employee. So, the other item, the other question we asked is, do we wish to play a role in preventing employees from competing with their employers? And we, there was no discussion or intention to provide protection from competition to employers. That's, we did do an informal poll, and the majority of the contractors said that they did not allow their employers to do work outside of their business. In other words, creating competition against themselves. So, it's kind of a self-regulating, if you will, a self-regulating with the contractors themselves. So, we have identified the following options for the City Commission's consideration. Number 1, Take No Action, which would allow the current code requirements to remain in place, which states that you can only be the qualified individual for one contractor. Number 2, Instruct Staff to Draft the Necessary Amendment to Allow Qualified Individual or Master Trademan to be the Designated Qualified Individual or Master Tradesman on Multiple License. Number 3, Instruct Staff to Draft the Necessary Amendments to Allow Qualified Individuals or Master Tradesmen Employed by Commercial Contractor to be the Designated Qualified Individual or Master Tradesman on Multiple Licenses, which would, more than one. Anyway, instruct staff to draft the necessary amendments to allow qualified individuals or master tradesmen employed by a non-contracting employer to be the designated qualified individual or master tradesman on multiple licenses. Or provide, number 5, Provide Alternate Direction Regarding the Imposition of Specific Number Limits or Within Option Number 2 or Number 3. Number 6, Instruct Staff to Draft the Necessary Amendments to No Longer Require the Designation of a Qualified Individual and Master Tradesman as a requirement of contractor or skilled trades licensing. Staff would recommend number 2. I know they're, I know it's kind of confusing, but I'd be more than willing to try to answer your questions, if you have any.
Commissioners, if I could throw in a little something, too. This has brought your attention, because this is something that I initiated. And the reason is, is because when we look at the reason for licensing our contractors, there's really kind of two reasons. One is, is that we hope that it ensures a reasonable knowledge of the codes and the application of the codes in their job, and we hope that it ensures a reasonable technical knowledge of the profession of which they're conducting in our community. Those are the two main reasons. And you can throw in a little insurance, but we can do that by registration. Those are the reasons. The, I think, probably unintended consequence of this is that it creates the only class of employment that I can think of in our community, in which the city government says, "Hey, you can work there, but if you work there, you can't work anywhere else in town." And it takes that decision away from the contractor, in essence, from the contractor's employer, although, you know, they could say, "Do whatever you want." They don't have that, I mean, it doesn't really make any difference if we say, "You can't work somewhere else." The reason, I think, that that was placed in here is because of the desire to have them actually supervise the work like they're supposed to do. And I think it kind of, again, unintentionally provides a presumption that unless we do that, someone will take advantage of this. They will put their name on a project, but they won't supervise that technical aspect of the project in the way that they're supposed to do it. And so, we just try to take that away from them by saying, "Well, you can't work on more than, for more than one entity." But it's very, very restrictive, and, you know, arguably, it may actually in some way infringe upon that individual's ability to entertain other commerce activities that they could otherwise entertain. So, the thinking behind this is to say, "Well, okay, so what happens if we say, 'You know what? We don't want to infringe on your ability, practical or otherwise, to work.'" Let's say you work for a company during the week, and on the weekends, you like to go do jobs for people, you know, let's say, "Hey, can you come do a simple electrical project that needs a permit?" And an electrician, licensed electrician, and they say, "I can't do it, because the city restricts me." Well, so if we say, "Okay, we won't restrict you. You can go do that." What's the harm? Well, the thought being is that if, as long as we know, A, that you're applying your license properly, we know who's, what licensed person is working on what project, so that if there's ever a question about if they're applying themselves properly, if we believe they violated the rules, we have the ability to address it through their licensing. So, if, you know, if I have a license, I'm a licensed electrician, and I violate the city's rules, the city has the ability to warn me, suspend my license, or revoke my license. So we still have a means to ensure that the outcome that we're looking for is, you know, happens, without restricting their ability to work here or work here, or do what they want. And so, that's why this is brought to you. And, I don't know, I spoke earlier with Donnie Marsh, who I believe is still chairman of the Building Advisory Commission, and I know we had a chance to talk with Elvin, and we really talked about, well, some options. One would be, is if we went with option 2, on the permit application, why not just have a place for the designated qualified person's name to be there and for them to sign that, so all parties know who that might be? That tells us who it is.
Yeah, I hear that, but I also know that that assumes that at the initial filing of the permit, the contractor is going to be able to know and place a name to exactly who he's going to assign to that job.
Yeah, many times, that's the person who would actually take the permit out, but I think whether it's at that stage or later, we would have to know who the qualified individual is, so that we know if they're applying themselves.
I like the idea of having them named. I don't like the idea of holding up a permit to get a job moving.
Sure.
To name, to name electrical firm, when that might still be bids that you're going to do.
Sure.
And you're not even, I mean, I have heartburn over that, but permits will be held, let alone naming the qualified person within that firm, and that works three months down the road.
Yeah, it does lend itself better to the general contractor than it would a subcontractor, without question, but I think we can figure that out.
Yeah, I think if we have a spot to name them.
Yeah.
But our system allows for customer service.
Yeah.
And then that's picked up somewhere along the process before that inspection of that work, before the work started out there, you know, at some phase. I would be comfortable with that, yeah.
Our practice, I'm sorry, our practice now is that we do not issue a permit until we have a general contractor listed. And we have had times, like you say, where an electrician or a master plumber, I mean, a plumber, plumbing contractor, or mechanical contractor has not been awarded yet. And we do, we will put, we will condition the permit that we won't do plumbing inspections or whatever inspections those are until we have that company listed. So we do that now. And we do have, the city clerk's office has, maintains all of the, all of the records as to who is the qualified individual for that particular company. But I think what the city manager is referring to is to have a place where that individual signs the permit, and he knows that he is responsible for that, but in some cases...
And I think, as long as we can find the means where you're not, you don't have that qualified person on a job in Topeka, and then you've got to get somehow, and schedules can't be made, and then a job is, like, frozen, because we've got to get a name on a blank that we could somehow get on a blank. So I would just want us to use as much thought into the customer service end, say that's a requirement we're going to have, but we've got multiple ways to do it. What will not hold up the contractor, but what will honor the process that we've got to do.
Yeah, I think we can do that. I think the key is, really, the outcome we want to have is, is if someone says, "We're using this qualified individual," we know that they're not making that up, that that qualified individual knows they're engaged, and I think we can figure that out for you.
And that, this is, again, you had mentioned, this is that main qualified individual. It doesn't preclude other people within that license then from acting on another job, from another, so moonlighting, or whatever you want to call it.
Correct.
Other than that qualified, that name qualified individual, and this would, this would then level that, level that playing field.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you may have several, you may have several master electricians in a company, but only one of them is designated as the qualified individual. And as long as the employer allows it, the others can go out and do work on the weekends or in the evenings, but that qualified individual, per the city ordinance, cannot.
Yeah, okay. Unless this change is made.
Correct, correct.
As recommended as item 2.
Correct.
Okay.
As a little bit of additional clarification, the qualified individual is a responsible party, but we don't dictate beyond that the degree of responsibility. By that, I mean, there's no expectation they're on the job site when inspections are conducted, or that they're on the job site. However they and their company deem appropriate to manage their work, to ensure they're code compliant, as long as they have someone that passes the test, meets the requirements, and is the designated QI, that's currently acceptable to us.
Yep.
And I would say, having been very involved in the drafting, the original language, the city manager's description is correct. The thinking at the time was that one QI limit precluded kind of being named in multiple projects, and was a means of accountability. But in looking at it further, I think we can address it as we've described.
And once again, most of the contractors have that rule in place already, that you don't go work for someone else or work on your own. So it's, I believe the majority, if not all of them, that we called and the administrative staff called, said, "Yeah, we have that rule in place already for ours."
Are there any questions, the staff?
Is there any public comment on this item? Please step forward and state your name and address. Good afternoon, sir.
I'm John Wickersham. I live at 2036 Roach. I've been a master electrician in Salina for over 50 years. I'm looking at a sheet of paper from the City of Salina, and it says, "As noted above, the city's licensing requirements only apply to the designated QI or master, and not other equally qualified employees. So, any protection that might be provided is not uniform to all employees in question." Why is the City Commission worrying about the protection of the employees having equal protection under law? This isn't a housing thing, you know, where you discriminate. I don't see where this is going. What's wrong with a simple "No," you cannot use your master designation for this company and for this company? The electrical business is highly competitive. So why are we worried about whether or not we can jump back and forth easily and bending the rules? The more we put into it, the more there is decipher. There isn't any amount of verbiage that can be put out that can say anything more simple than "No, you can't do that."
Do we have anybody else to comment? Bring it back to the commission for further discussion and potential action.
Now, just to make sure I'm clear, I'll just look over at city manager. I know that these are not comparable, so I hope that I don't cause heartburn when I make this statement, but I think that it'll help for some people to understand it in different terms. If, if you were a manager at a retail operation, right now, you could go out and get a second job as a manager at another operation, unless the corporation you're working for had a policy that prohibited that.
That is correct.
And so, some of the comments brought forward are that, that the way that it's currently worded is, the qualified individual, only the qualified individual, not the others, that the qualified individual would be not allowed to do that similar thing.
Correct. Within the corporate limits of the city. Ironically, they could go outside our jurisdictional authority, I would think, and do the same thing. Is that correct?
Certainly. We do building permit inspection in the county, but they don't have contractor licensing. So yes, they could.
So we would have kind of equilibrium in geographic areas, and so I think the unintended consequence is a bit of protectionism, that there's no reason. I guess the question is, for the city, is, do we want to get involved in that aspect? We really don't in anything else. So if we don't here, we would want to lift that restriction.
Any other, any other questions or comments or discussion?
I just think, maybe to be clear to the gentleman's comment, Mr. Wickersham's comment, I mean, I think we're kind of, maybe I wasn't hearing it clearly, but I think we're doing the opposite of what he was kind of thinking about. I think we're not getting involved in their business. We're sort of saying, "That's up to the contractor, how they want to run their employees," but the city really isn't taking a position. I mean, is that kind of way I'm understanding this correctly, or?
Yeah, I don't look at it so much as an employee right, although someone who's a qualified individual could argue they're being oppressed somewhat, excuse me, by this regulation. I look at it as more, do we need to infringe on the free market with regards to what that person does in order to ensure that they apply themselves on the job in the way that we expect them to?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't believe we need to do that.
Right, right. Makes sense to me.
If not, I'd entertain a motion on this matter.
Page 7, those are the actions, so worded is, per any one of the six. Do your 2, is it just instruct staff to draft the necessary amendments to allow qualified individual or master tradesman to be the designated qualified individual or master tradesman on multiple licenses? That's all we're needing to...
If that's your wish, that would be the way to approach that, yes.
Okay. That's my movement. I was just looking, you know, looking for some pre-word on that, but...
Right. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to instruct staff to draft the necessary amendments to allow qualified individual or master tradesman to be the designated qualified individual or master trademan on multiple licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
How about those oddball ones?
The tricky one.
Suppose you have a motion for us, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I do. I move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and...
those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in those matters, and reconvene at 4:40 PM.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session for attorney-client reasons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Do we expect any action?
We do not.
Okay, we are now in executive session.